Hearing, May 21st at 7:30 goes to Milverdale May School. Let's start out with a roll call.
Marie Gerke, Secretary.
Markey.
Jamie Lowery.
Robb McGinn.
Rich Kanham.
Tom Coon.
Todd McEnroe.
Tad Redway-Planner.
I need somebody to make a motion to approve the agenda.
The motion is approved. How seconded are we?
Okay. The motion has been approved and seconded. Are those in paper? Are those opposed? Okay. Our agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. We have four items on the public hearing, the first of which is the proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in general, dealing with definitions, district regulations, and dimensional requirements. The second item is the proposed amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance Performance Standards, lighting, parking, loading, signs, pet daycare centers, contracted yards, and drive-through facilities. The third item is the proposed amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance New Districts, Downtown Business District 1, Downtown Business District 2, Townhouse Corner District 3, Alfred Road Business District, Business Office Park Industrial District, and the Gateway District. The fourth item is the proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance map, consisting of proposed zoning map changes and district descriptions in Section 13. I would ask that if you have any comments, that you step forward and state your name loudly, because it's being recorded and we'd like to be able to let anybody who happens to go onto the town website and see this know who's saying what. That being said, we'll jump right in. Item one, proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. The Section 2 definitions had just a couple of changes from the last hearing that we had. We have added, in definitions, we have added omitted use languages to the existing conditional use languages, and we have added a permitted use as definition. Are there any questions?
Y'all can find that on the sheet.
Yep. Right up here in the front. Any discussion on that section? If there are none, we'll move on to the next section. Section 6.2, District Regulations. The Board has made no changes from the last public hearing. Are there any questions or comments concerning the district regulations? If there are none, we'll move on to Section 6.3, Dimensional Requirements. Again, no changes were made to this section from the last public hearing. Are there any comments or questions? Diane?
Sorry, Diane Robbins, Arundel. You were talking about Section 6?
6.3.
I can't find anything that has a Section 6.
There were no changes from the last public hearing that we had. There is a dimensional requirements table.
Will sign this one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Page 6. I'll give you a minute to look at it, Diane.
It's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, we will move on to item two. Proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance Performance Standards, Section 7.5 for lighting. For the worse, there were a couple of minor changes made. We have changes to when an outdoor installation is being substantially expanded, the planning board may require the entire lighting installation to be subject to the requirements. We're not saying that it has to be, we're saying that you might have to do it. And a lot of that will depend upon the scope of the changes that are being made.
Did you change the colors? Sorry, Diane.
We did change the color.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not in this section. You're talking about the color for signs? Yeah, that's another section.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
We also included the Gateway, Alfred Road Business, and the Townhouse Corner District as being subject to the standards. Are there any questions? If there are none, we'll move on to the next section. Off-street parking and loading. We made no changes to the recommendations from the previous public hearing. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If there are none, we'll move on to the next section. Section 712, Signs. In 12.8, we made an adjustment to increase the number of times a commercial banner may be displayed from two to four times a year, but we have decreased the duration from 30 days to 14 days. In Section 1213-5A, we've eliminated the elimination, the limitation on color for the fuel prices. Originally, it said that it may consist only of white or gold lettering or numbering displayed on a background. We have eliminated that requirement. Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, we'll move on to 8.28, Pet Daycare Centers. For the next three items, 8.28, 8.29, and 8.3, we made no changes to any of the ordinances that were presented at the public hearing two weeks ago. So are there any questions on the Pet Daycare Centers? If there are none, we'll move on. Any questions on contracted yards? If there are none, we'll move on. Any question on drive-through facilities?
Sorry, Richard, can I ask? Can I ask one question back on 8.28?
8.28, Pet Daycare Centers?
Yeah. In the R4 district, which is the district that has the larger lot sizes, was there, I'm just asking a question, was there a particular reason why you limited it to 24 dogs?
I think our discussion revolved around how many dogs would be too many? Because if you get a lot of dogs out there and they're all parking at one time, they'd be too many.
Well, it wouldn't stop me from voting this, but one of the things that we may want to consider if we have to do any additional changes is to do some additional research on some of these larger ones, like this one in Saco, that's pretty large, the paws. Because in sections of our town that the land can sustain more, I think that there should be an allowance, if they're in an area that wouldn't affect a whole bunch of houses and they have the acreage to support the additional animals. I think that we need to have a little more flexibility there.
We can put that on the agenda to look at it at a future date.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am.
Yes.
Diane, because we knew the Complain Committee was working on the residential and rural conservation district, basically, this has been tailored for the smaller commercial districts. We will adjust this when we get into the rural conservation and residential districts.
Are there any other questions? If there are none, we'll move on to item number three. Proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance New Districts. We have the Downtown Business District 1 at 8.21, and there was a change that was made. Artists and Craftsman Studios had been inadvertently deleted. Going back through, we had looked at it, seen where we had said that that would be a good use originally, and in the final draft, it ended up accidentally being deleted, so we have put that back in. We have increased the size of the post sign height for a single occupancy, use from eight feet to 10 feet. Nothing was changed in the Downtown Business District 2. Are there any questions on either one of those districts? If there are none, we'll go on to the Townhouse Corner District, 8.23. We made no changes from the presentation of two weeks ago. Are there any questions on the Townhouse Corner District? If there are none? Yes.
Okay. In a description here, how Sun Avenue, is that a traditional name for Sun Avenue?
As soon as this passes town meeting, things like that will be adjusted.
Steve, 8.24, the Alfred Road Business District. We had one adjustment. Medical marijuana caregiver production facility was a use that was to be allowed, it is no longer going to be allowed. Sorry, please. I can tell you were disappointed.
Can I ask why?
The general consensus from the public was that they didn't want it in there, so we took it out.
I think when the Board looked at the difference from the two sites of towns, the other business area where it could be allowed in that one, because of the high residential, higher residential, we decided it wasn't appropriate.
Any other questions on the Alfred Road District? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard. Oh, sorry, I live on Alfred Road. I'm not sure if we're at that part yet, but extension of this district? Are we talking about that?
Yeah. Yeah, we're at that section.
I guess I'm opposed to it. I don't guess, I know I'm opposed to it. But I would like to know what's driving it.
What's driving it is that most of the eastern side of Route 111 is business with some residential property involvement, and we're starting to get some feedback about allowing businesses in the downtown area.
I was just extending. Are you talking about extending it to powerline?
Yes.
The consensus was that, given there was a lot of pressure and a lot of concern to expand business opportunities, it was a natural place. I'm developing much sections of the land that improved the progress to extend that business district, which is a natural. I just go all the way to line. There was discussion about that, but we're not like the Complain Committee. He don't have.
I am directly affected by this. I suspect my taxes may go up. However.
You don't change use, you probably shouldn't, but it shouldn't impact your tax if you change the use. But in saying that, I'm not the expert on that, but always in provision within our ordinance was to expand that district, and that's already in place in ordinance and Complain, should, and I think it was, the word was, should it become full, I mean with the residency, with the business and the original short area right at the corner. So I think the Board didn't come to mind not going all the way to line, then coming back, looked at that kind of expansion. But really, the biggest change is to the rear, getting some property that probably wouldn't have been able to have been used for very much at all to now have quite a bit of value.
I guess I don't see that as good enough. I've been concerned that some, maybe part of it is the hope that a large business will come in and take care of the taxes, I guess, but that'll drive up my taxes and possibly force me out. That's what I'm arguing. I oppose it.
Thank you.
That question, if I may, that question's been asked a number of times, there's some sections of business districts that have expanded into former residential districts. I consulted with the tax assessor about that, and she says, unless you put a use on that property, or if it's the only property that's surrounded by fully developed properties that are commercially used, that are fully developed, she will not assess it in different mechanics currently assess it. She has to have a reason to assess it.
She will not, but she could. My understanding is that we are attached on highest best use.
Not her.
Your tax authorities. For instance, you could be in a residential district, if you have a lot out there, she still taxes you like $2,000 an acre. Look at, if you look at your tax bill, if you're a tax, I think there's some larger property on the surface that would attest to that. If you have 30, 40, 100 acres and one house on you, there's very little taxation on the money you have to sell. It's only when you put uses on it that are taxable, that the uses will be called property, and the property that is high quality, high quality construction, new construction. She's very limited in what she can assess, it's a very rigid system they have to follow the stated assessing process to try to get it equalized, because there's so much in the past, right? So she could have asked a discussion on the Complain Committee. If you want something from them, because that's a legitimate question. If you want them, I'll let you have them. I'll see if I can get something. If I can't get her, then I'll get a stamp. That'll do it. Thank you for bringing it up.
In looking at this Alfred Road one, maybe I'm missing something because it's just a section. It doesn't state how big, what the limit on the size of the business is, or am I missing it?
No.
So there's no limit on the size of the business?
It's restricted based on the amount of land that they have available.
And water and soils.
All of the other things that affect.
Pervious land area and all of the small, it includes almost all.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions on the Alfred Road District? If there are none, the Business Office Park Industrial District. There were no changes to that section from the original public hearing two weeks ago. Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, I'm Joe Paulini with the Arundel Cottage Preserve Project. I have written on May 7th, excuse me, a letter to the planning board, to Tad, that I would like to read for the record. May I?
You have to speak up, Joe.
I will. As the town of Arundel considers revisions to the land use ordinances, I wish to express my thoughts and concerns. Arundel Cape Bonport Cottage Preserve LLC has initiated the development of the Cape Arundel Cottage's Preserve in 1976 Boardland Grove. This project, when fully developed, is valued at approximately $70 million. Consideration must be given to any changes, additions, modifications, et cetera, to the land use ordinance that will adversely impact the seasonal cottage project. We will construct a first-class development that makes Arundel proud, it will have a very positive impact on Route 1 corridor that attracts other businesses, developments whereby they in turn will create and develop first-class projects. Our success will also be Arundel's success. Thank you for considering this communication. I've attached a further explanation that I would like to read to you folks. May I?
Yes.
Comments on proposed Arundel zoning text and map amendments? Dear Tad, as you know, I represent a large landowner on Route 1, and we are in the process of investing heavily in the town of Arundel with Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve Project. That property is currently Zone B1 and is abutted to the south by property Zone CCS and R-1. Accordingly, we are very interested in the proposed changes to both the zoning map and the zoning districts along US Route 1, as the decision is made today to develop commercial growth along that corridor will be felt for years to come. We would like to provide the following comments on both the proposed B1 zone amendments and the zoning map amendments, which we reviewed online. Map amendments, we are in agreement to change the lower parcel of the Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve from R1 to B1. This parcel has been designated open space, so it is not affected either way. B1 text amendments, we are supportive of the town's efforts to bolster appropriate scaled business growth along Route 1 corridor with the use of DB1 and DB2, replacing the CC, CS, and other zones. While not in agreement with all the proposed standards of these zones, I am not providing comments at this time. My focus is on more aggressive and industrial uses of the B1 district. The B1 district begins at the Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve property and extends northward to the Bitterford Line. The proposed amendments, Sections 8.256, have added essentially mining and quarries as a conditional use on the premises of creating a pad site. While this appears to be a business-friendly approach, their language could have detrimental effects by the proposition of blasting for pad sites with no real developments. Plans for infrastructure, sewer for example, to support a proposed level of development proposed a pad site. We would encourage close examination of this provision, as it may be counterproductive to reasonable development on Route 1 and leave properties open and unattractive as viewed from adjacent land on Route 1. Rather, we would suggest that the ordinance allow blasting, pouring as part of an approved site plan for development, and I'm adding this, it's not on, like ours. As we're blasting and we're removing, we're also developing. There's specific language comments. Sections 8.256-3A include seasonal cottages or homes within 700-foot limits. And this is more, I don't know if a correction is required here, but under 8.256C, you have a comment about slope requirement not, that is, one to zero. In other words, vertical one to zero out, so I think you may want to correct that. And it's still there, so. I want to thank you, and again, thank you for listening to this, and if you want this for the record?
Yeah, I have it, but I'll take your side.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not a resident of Arundel, am I able to speak?
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
My name is Rick Light. I'm not a resident, I want to make that clear, but I do a fair amount of work in Arundel, and I'm working on the Arundel Resort Project, I'm the engineer for the project. And I'm not going to regurgitate what Joe said, and I want to reiterate, I think the concern with allowing, under the 8.25 provision, allowing mining or pouring without a condition that it would be part of, typically something like that would be part of an approved development. It opens it up basically to scarring the landscape and the idea of intending to create , assuming the intent to create pad sites, so that they could be made available for development. I think in the long term, you open yourself up for the opportunity that you scar the landscape and not have any development, and that I think is more detrimental to development overall. And there's a section in here, if I could just, under 8.25.61 objective, the proposed mineral extraction operations shall be designed, graded, and restored at the termination of the operation, so that the property may be immediately developed for business or industrial sites and serviced by roads and utilities and construction. That's wishing that development would happen immediately after. I think this leaves it wide open, so we would encourage the Board to look closely and reject this as written. Thank you.
I'd like to add something if I could. Joe Paulini, in my previous life, I worked for the high-tech industry doing facility planning, acquisition, design, and development throughout the United States, Canada, Puerto Rico, Ireland. One of the things that I used to see were people going in and strip these sites, waiting for companies like us to come along. I was fortunate to be with a Fortune 500 company a few times, and it never happened. And years later, I mean, I spent almost 20-plus years in that industry, I used to go back sometimes and drive by, it was still stripped, open, no developments. So that's from experience, gentlemen, and I'm giving you my knowledge and my experience, not to stop people from doing what they have a right to do. They have a right to do, but, you know, get a development going and then do those things. It still looks beautiful, it's more attractive sometimes to sell something still in its natural state, because some developers like myself, we're not taking ledge out, we're using it to create features, if it's going to be that beautiful, rather than just a flat area. So it's my knowledge and my experience for many years, we're passing it on for whatever it's worth. Thank you.
Any other comments on the session?
We've still on 8.25.6, is that correct?
We're on 8.25, the Business Office Park Industrial District, so yes, that would be part of this.
Right. Wayne Monroe, Arundel resident?
Thank you.
Property owner in the BI section, and in many cases, you may have to mine out some of that ledge in order to do any development, period. There is significant ledge along the Route 1 corridor, as you know. So, you know, if the mineral extraction is a precondition to a development, in many cases, that may be necessary. And I believe the standard's written and prepared here, very well done, so the planning board would have any control over that in any future application. So we should not shut that off totally, because if you look at the Arundel cottages right now, what have they been doing for the last three months? Mineral extraction. And they're going to use some of those natural resources on-site, there's a lot of piles of riprap up there, that's going to be used for road control on-site, so we may very well need that mineral extraction in that zone. And the planning board, with all the permits that are approved, would mitigate any potential consequence from that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? If there are none, we'll move on to 8.26, the Gateway District. We have had no changes to this district from the last public hearing. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I'm really not sure what, it said there's no changes from last time, last public hearing, so what is it, where are we at with that? Are we proposing one-acre lots, the setback, the change? Well, I mean, I have the section, but I didn't find it in here. Please have a big jump on the table. Do you have that? I have the 8.26, Gateway District.
On page 2 to the table. And Sam, you're on number 2 and 3.
Okay, I got it. So that's the same as it was last time?
Yes, sir. Nothing has changed.
And this is just a public hearing on this, and then after some quiet time, there's going to be a vote?
Because of the public hearing two weeks ago, there were some proposed changes that were made, and those changes were made, we have to have another public hearing. This is part of the ordinance that is going to town meeting, so we've included it as well.
Okay.
Okay?
So I can leave then?
Yes, sir.
Are you happy with it?
Make sure to come to town meeting.
Just make sure to come to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions about the Gateway District, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 4. Proposed amendments to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance map, proposed zoning map changes, which I believe are all up here in the front, are they not?
Anybody need any maps? We can take a minute before you get them.
And again, there was nothing changed. And again, there was nothing changed in these maps from the last meeting.
This is coming in, I didn't know what you said.
It's not new. What it is, it's enhanced. It shows the relationship of the R4 district, the R1 and the R2 districts. That's what it shows.
Was enhanced ARD?
There. Nothing's changed on the lines. What we did is we made sure that it was clear where the boundaries were. Because it only showed the ARD, it didn't show what resulted in the R1, R2, and R4 districts that surrounded it.
Are there any questions on the proposed map changes? Here we are, we'll move on to the district descriptions in Section 13. This was a whole lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was, I had to spend on several things, that's why we're having a little bit of a delay.
Okay. What it shows you with the top is what Sections 13 says right now about the district descriptions. And if there are adjustments made, it lists out what the new description to that section will be. And it lists out, if one of the sections approved at the town meeting, DB1, DB2, the Business Park Industrial, will be added in. It will be, it lists out the various descriptions of what those districts consist of.
And if those ordinances do not, if those warrants for those individual districts do not pass, then it reverts to the existing zoning lines. So there'll be no change from the existing.
Underlying.
Yep, the underlying zone remains.
It's been an interesting process. Each of these public hearings are comments that we received from the townspeople, a lot of times, not very many other kinds of questions. All of these changes actually were recommendations at each of these meetings. And there's been many over the last two and a half years trying to get to this point. So as we've gotten more and more recommendation, obviously, it gets a little better. I'm confident that there will be other changes required once we try to enact all of this stuff. But I think everybody's done a good job and obviously we couldn't do it without you guys.
Are there any questions, any comments? Here we are, I'm going to close the public hearing on all of these items. We now have a regular meeting to have. Gentlemen, we need to. But I will call the regular meeting a quarter of a day. The agenda will be very simple. Motion to forward the revisions to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the walk. The typo got it fixed once it's put in. Before we get into that discussion, I need to have the motion in a second. We adjourn the special meeting and now we're going to the regular meeting. Oh, yes, we're starting now. We only have the one issue to decide, do we send this? Well. And already it's second. Now we can have the discussion and we can always decide to amend.
8.25, 4.6, 3.3. So it's obviously the motion. I'll let it go.
You have less undermining, okay? And also two, we'll have less chances of falling, okay? If you have a lax, then we'll address that later. We did really discuss it, but this is for information purpose, for your question.
Anything else that we would like to discuss? Here we are, all those in favor? Motion is unanimous?
I am.
Somebody make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Yes.
The motion's been made to adjourn, so the motion's been seconded.
We get told a lot of things.
For the Congress, that's not our back. That's theirs, but they're saying.
What is it that you're on?
Rules and regulations. No, it's a different article.
That's a separate thing.
Yes.
Well, you know, you don't want to just jump it into.
But if you don't have any more displays to establish what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, then Tad and Co. of course will have no grounds to go back and say, look, you've got 16 neighbors on the roof, that thing, 20 trucks in your yard is excessive. But if you have any place. But without anything in place, there's nothing that they can. So that's the, that's not with that one. You're going to come up with more holes and more things. But, you know, every one of these provisions in here is not to safeguard people and operations like that. It's a safeguard. Fire? But the provisions in place, these guys, but these guys can't come out and take action for what that is. Yeah, for what that is, I don't know. But without it, they can't do anything. That's one of the situations where doing what he's all going. Without the mineral extraction standards, he can go out there wherever the world wants to tend. You know, there's no circum, because he's come back, he's registered, he's licensed, but there's nothing else. He's still actively doing it.
I'll answer, the board hasn't, I'll answer the question.
They have to, they have to do like three-year renewal terms. Another part of it still is. We have to, we have to enjoy the neighbors.
I don't know if that is, it's good.
Yeah.
Hey, they kept it in town.
Oh, yeah. That was why.
Okay, see what happens.
So that's a done deal?
No, because, no, it still has to go, it still has to go in front of the. I mean, they sent me the check, but it's, you get to go.